Good evening and welcome. This evening's forums will be recorded. My name is Chelsea Marr and I'll be moderator for tonight's forum. The virtual forum is sponsored by the Nonpartisan League of Women Voters of Washington, Clickatot and Skamania Counties at Large, with the Columbia Gorge News and the Goldendale Sentinel. Tonight, we are speaking with candidates for Clickatot County Commissioner in District 1 and District 3. Amanda Kitchens and Todd Andrews in District 1. Ron Irig and Dan Christopher in District 3. Tonight's recording will be posted on Clickatot, Skamania League of Women Voters Facebook page and their YouTube channel. It can also be found on Columbia Gorge News and the Goldendale Sentinel's YouTube channels. The candidates did not receive our questions in advance. Some of the questions were written by the sponsoring organizations and some were submitted by the public in advance of tonight's forum. All questions have been vetted for bias and accuracy by the sponsors. Candidates have agreed to stay on topic and will have two minutes to respond to each question. We will alternate which candidate answers first and the question will be summarized before each candidate's response. We will have the timekeeper visual on screen for all participants. The timekeeper screen will go yellow when there are 15 seconds remaining and it will go red when the time is up. If necessary, I will interrupt a candidate and ask them to complete their sentence and then discontinue their answer once the allotted time has been exceeded. The order of the candidates tonight will be in order found on our ballots. But Andrews will go first, followed by Amanda Kitchens, Dan Christopher and Ron Irig. We will alternate who begins each answer for each question following that order. So that all of us can focus on the candidates during the forum, the chat function has been disabled and we ask all viewers to remain muted. If you have any questions, please email the League of Women Voters at the address on your screen. The forum is an opportunity for these candidates to present their views and positions so that you, the voter, can make an informed decision when you mark your ballot. Please make sure you are registered to vote. You can do that online at vote411.org or at the elections office near you. And now let's begin. Again, my name is Chelsea Marr and I will be tonight's moderator. Welcome to our Clickatot County Candidates this evening. The candidates received the ground rules for tonight's forum in advance. Some had agreed to abide by them. Now we will hear from the candidates for a three-minute introduction. Mr. Andrews, please tell us a little about yourself and why you're running for office and what assets you bring to the role of County Commissioner.
Yes, thank you so much, Chelsea. I was probably one of the last people to put my name on the ballot. Running for public office was never something that I saw myself doing. I was always an avid voter, but dedicated my life to raising my family and and baking and building homes here in the gorge. But a little bit about myself, lived here in the gorge 30 years from married into a third generation family. And basically, my background is broken into kind of three different decades as far as my vocation. The first 10 years, how most people know me, is I had Loafers Old World Bakery there in Bingen, Washington. And we had a place in Stevenson as well. And then we had the Creamery in White Salmon. So that's unless I built the home or remodeled your home, that's how most people remember me. But basically, my years living here, as I started, as we're getting in, my kids are grown up now, moved out of the house. All three of my kids went to White Salmon Schools. All my money and all my businesses are from this area. And spending the last three decades here, I decided to run because I became a little fearful of what it might look like for my kids or grandkids to be able to grow up here with the expenses and some of the decisions and taxes that I saw coming from our local and state governments. So decided to run and do something about that. I think my years of doing, of building up businesses, building up loafers to 32 employees and well over a million dollar in sales, doing wholesale and retail businesses, going to the farmer's market. But then also my years of doing bakery consulting, basically I helped other companies start, some of them very large artisan bakeries and some of them very small, just like loafers. And so I think those years and then being a licensed contractor give me the skills needed to affect change and make smart fiscal decisions for our area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, Mr. or Ms. Kitchens, excuse me. Please tell us a little about yourself and why you're running for office and what assets you bring to the role of County Commissioner.
My name is Amanda Kitchens and I am here to be of service to the people in the lands that have raised me. I'm a fourth generation White Salmon resident. My grandmother grew up in Bingen and worked at the Mount Adams Packing House. My grandfather was a legendary logger and retired from SDNS. I was raised by my mother Christie, a first grade teacher at Witten Elementary for 31 years. And my father Greg, a logger turned contractor and volunteer firefighter for 27 years. I grew up learning the value of hard work and service and community. In 1999, I graduated from Columbia High School and I moved to New York and Seattle and Los Angeles. And I started a family and we had a business. Luckily, 10 years ago, I was able to return and I immediately got involved. I became a board member at the Mountain View Grange. I volunteered in the schools and sports teams and local nonprofits. And I had a great time returning, but a lot had changed since I had been gone. And it was apparent that a lot more was happening and coming fast. So I wanted to get involved on a deeper level. In February, I threw my name in the hat for County Commissioner and I started my listening tour. I believe for democracy to work, the people's voices must be heard. I've been to over 30 Board of County Commissioner meetings. I've had countless conversations with citizens. I've sat down with employees and directors and elected officials, past and present of Clickatot County. I've met with police officers and firefighters and regional directors of nonprofits. I've been learning a lot and there's still a lot to learn. But I know that we have what it takes as a county to come together and face these big challenges that we all know are there head-on and together. I am a collaborative leader. I'm a positive leader. I'm a really hard worker. And I have proven myself to be a bridge builder. When I become County Commissioner, one of the first things I want to start jumping into is the helping support the update of our comprehensive plan that has not been fully updated since the 1970s. And this will allow us to come together and think about what we want our county to look and feel like in the next 50 to 100 years. We can cover land use and zoning, agricultural, energy overlay zones. We could even do housing and childcare. And I'm also really excited about helping our county develop a grant writing department so we can see some extra revenue coming in. I'm excited to help bring everybody together in a positive work environment and a collaborative collaborative work environment so we can get the good work done. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Christopher, please tell us a little about yourself and why you're running for office and what assets you bring to the role of County Commissioner.
Thank you. So my name is Dan Christopher. I have been married to my wife for about 30 years. We have two adult sons and one grandson. Unlike the other candidates, I was not born here. I'm not third generation, fifth generation. We actually moved here in 96, so eight years ago. But I have been a business owner for the last 25 years that has to manage his fiscal budget to make sure he doesn't declare bankrupts. So in my business ownership, I had a lot of free time in the winter. So I started attending the Board of County Commissioner meetings just because I've always been interested in government and wanting to make sure our elected officials are actually working for us. What I found was that I didn't believe that they were working for us. That there's a lot of, let's call it cronyism in this county. And a lot of rewards for special people and the rest of us aren't special people. And those come in the form of solar projects under canvas. A lot of things that the people are absolutely against, but the board shoves through. We currently have one going on taxation, which I hope you get to that question later. So I decided to run to actually benefit and work for the people. The minute I threw my name in the ring four years ago, I immediately got lambasted by the establishment that likes it done their way and frankly doesn't care what the people have to say about it. Why am I running again? Boy, that is a really good question. Many times I've thought about quitting. Many times I've said it just isn't worth it. The amount of attack I get from the establishment on a daily and weekly basis is immense, but my wife reminds me that I'm not a quitter. And if I quit, I'm not quitting on me, I'm quitting on you. Because I am the first non-establishment candidate to win election in this county in decades. If it doesn't work out for me, it ain't going to work out for you when you try. So I'm going to go down fighting, I'm going to go down swinging and I'm going to go down educating the public on what's actually going on in the boardroom and what's going on behind closed doors. People can call that contentious all they want, but the way I look at it is you need to know what's going on in your government. And my job is to create transparency, to give you Zoom, to give you recordings, to make sure all the meetings are recorded and there's no workshops that aren't recorded, to make sure everything is in the open public air so that you can see what's going on. And then it's up to the people to actually pay attention and vote accordingly. And so I'm going to continue to run and hopefully get all that done.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Irig, please tell us a little about yourself, why you're running for office and what assets you bring to the role of County Commissioner.
Thank you, Chelsea. My name, like I said, Ron Irig, I'm for District 3 County Commissioner. I've lived in Clickatot County most of my life and worked most of my life. I'm a third generation resident. And I'm proud to say that. I was raised here. My wife and I were married in 1985. Actually, at the time, we lived in White Salmon at Pucker Huddle. At the, it was called Johnson's Apartments at the time. And then after about six, eight months, we moved to Goldendale. I was working at the PUD at the time. Probably my past history, I served as mayor of City of Goldendale for three years. I served as Clickatot County Commissioner, District 3, for four years. I've served as a hospital commissioner in the past for seven years. And then again, I ran again and I'm in my third year serving as a hospital commissioner district. I believe if you're going to be in the community, you need to be involved, give back to the community. Also, I've been servant on the Fairburt, total of 20 years. And within that 20-year span, I've served five years as president. And when serving as president, the first time is two years, we built the RV park. And then lately, we did a long-range plan and built the duly barn with the duly money. I am a member of the American Legion, the golf course, a member of the Committee Grace Brethren. As I said, I worked at the PUD for 37 years. I started in 1979 as a groundman. I went through the apprenticeship and became a juryman lineman for the IBW certified me. And then I was 20 years on the line crew and then I moved up into management. I learned a lot in management. Union negotiations, water rights, dealing with personnel. When I retired, I was the chief operating officer. I worked with 80% of the employees of Clickatot PUD that were under me. Why do I want to run? I love Clickatot County a lot. That's why I'm running. I've been deeply saddened over the last four years. The environment, there's been real good people that have left way before they should have left. There's been language and gestures from people on the commission that shouldn't be tolerated. We've also lost some solid waste contracts, financially lost. So what do I bring? I bring experience, demonstrated leadership and institutional knowledge for District 3 Clickatot County Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Now on to this evening's questions. Each candidate will have two minutes. So we'll begin with questions from tonight's sponsors. So what budget challenges do you foresee for Clickatot County? And what solutions do you propose to help solve those challenges? And we'll start with Ms. Kitchens. So again, it's budget challenges and solutions.
Thank you. Well, right now, if you have been following the budget, we are down to a $1.5 million deficit. And there are going to be more budget challenges in the future. We got very comfortable with our landfill dollars. And in the last year, we have lost over $500,000 in contract fees. I think it's time for us to be creative in finding new revenue sources. And I'm not saying through taxing our people. I think, one, we need to be repairing our landfill relationships. We need to be working with the landfill, landfill, finding out what contracts are coming up and going and meeting with those county commissioners and, you know, trying to sweet talk them into sending their trash to us. I also think it is imperative on day one, I want to start the discussion on hiring a grant writer and get a grant writing department going. It is crazy that our county does not have one. Most counties do. And I am confident that a grant writer will pay for itself within the first grant. I also think there's opportunity for taxing outside corporations that are coming in that are reliable on our resources. And also, if we can grow our housing, then we can grow our property tax base. So I'd like to see some more housing out there for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Christopher, budget challenges and solutions.
Thank you. In all reality, our biggest budget challenges have been, and I hope don't continue to be, bad financial decisions. Bad financial decisions, when you're not able to have any forethought on the consequences of those, cost the taxpayers millions. The landfill contracts that Ms. Kitchen spoke of, it's actually $1.5 million in lost revenue. I was actually working with Republic to try to renegotiate their contract for them, to give them a lower tipping fee, to make them more competitive in the market so that they can win more bids. We knew in advance we were going to lose these three counties and we knew it two years in advance. Part of that negotiation was to get them to sign a minimum. So we normally got about 9.1, 9.2 million dollars from the landfill. And I was getting them to sign a guarantee of either 9.1 or 9.2 million dollars. Meaning if we lost those contracts, we wouldn't lose 1.5 million dollars. We'd have that guarantee. The problem is, is the board chose a 9.5 million dollar guarantee and a number that Republic has never paid, which made it way too high. And they said that they would just take their chances. Well, the chance blew up and it cost the taxpayers 1.5 million dollars. We're now going to be paying anywhere from half a million to a million more in the jail. We're starting a corner. How do we fix this? We thin our budget and we control our spending. That is the number one thing we do. And we were supposed to start that at the end of last year and we have not done it. How the establishment wants to fix the problem is through taxation. More new taxes in every way known to the sun and they're lobbying for a legislative exchange to raise your property taxes from 1% to 3%. I disagree. I think we need to balance our budget correctly.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Irig. Budget challenges and solutions, please.
Thank you. Yes, it's quite a budget challenge. Like you said, the expenses came out at $67 million. They did look at the revenue, up some of the revenue. We're still out about a million and a half. I was asked this question somewhat the other night. I think what's really important is, one, build the relationships with Republic. I was going to say Rabanco because that's who I worked with when I was a commissioner before. But it's Republic. And work on new contracts. I think it's very important for the commissioner to work with other counties. I did that when I was a commissioner before, like when other counties were looking at the landfill. We went to those counties and worked with them. Like Snohomish County was an example to come to Clickatot County and bring their solid waste. So we'd get collections from the waste. On the budget challenges, I believe this is going to be a 12-month process. I don't think a three-month process works all the time. You need to start early in the year. You need to be talking to department heads, elected officials, and you need to hold the line. I had said that the other day to Commissioner Christopher. I appreciated when they were having a discussion about two different, about employee who had left. Can you combine the positions? And I appreciate Dan asking that question because I'm there also. If people want new positions in the county to start with, show me how we're going to fund those positions. We need to see the funding, but it's going to be a long-term process. I have to give it to the commissioners to work on this this year because I don't know where they're going to come up with a million and a half for how they're going to whittle that down. But I will move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews, budget challenges and solutions.
Yeah, I think, wow, going last is hard because they all touched on a number of good ideas. Some of it comes down to just a little bit of good old fashioned tightening the belt. Definitely the county, not unlike all government, does not operate like a business. So when you look at certain things, there's just numerous things that you're, I've been listening to as I've been going to the board meetings and attending on Zoom, that I'm shocked, like they don't set aside, they don't set aside a certain percentage every year, every month for retirement. So with the Sheriff's Department had, so there were a number of people that retired this year. And they just come out of that money. Other counties set those things aside, so it's not a surprise and they're in a fund. And then Dan hit, made a great comment. It's basically every year, twice a year, every two years, they make some of these big decisions. And the contracts aren't well-read or the decisions that they make are, I call generationally flawed, you know, where they just cost us a lot of money. We didn't, we didn't come up with the best agreement on our, on our windmills, on our turbines. There's a lot of things where outside corporations kind of steamroll over us and we don't get the best contracts from them. They're doing that on solar right now. Partnering with other counties, that's where I've found some of the best decisions is in other counties where I've gone to the board and certain people here and they're like, oh, that's not how we do it. And then you talk to other counties and there's, there's 500,000, three-quarters of a million. There's a lot of money left on the table in partnering with other counties. One of the, one of the ways is through our 911 call center. And then just planning and looking far ahead.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question number two. Rural emergency response systems are often underfunded and face unique challenges. What specific measures do you propose to improve funding resources and efficiency for emergency response? We'll start with Mr. Christopher. Steps you'd like to take to support emergency response systems.
Boy, I'm sure the other three of them are loving the fact that I got this question first. First off, let's stick to the wheelhouse of county commissioners, which is policy, county operations and county budget. I don't have any control over fire departments or EMS districts, so that's, that's a question for those commissioners. I will continue to support our emergency management department. I will continue to try to set aside the money that's going to be needed to replace our aging radio towers. So it's not the next surprise coming up. As you know, I just, we just managed to get the last radio tower online and that one cost us $1.6 million to bring online. We have struggling generators where pass boards had some lack of forethought and they put home generators in at the emergency communication towers instead of industrial generators. So we have a problem with generators failing like during the last fire. And this is the forethought that I'm talking about. Sometimes you need to make a good decision that will save lives. And that decision might actually cost a little more when it's originally made, like a decent generator. But again, to narrow it down, I will continue to support 911. I haven't been nothing but supportive of emergency management. We, they had over, are understaffing and burnout and we approved three casual employees for them. So they always have somebody in training so that when there is an opening, somebody can pop from training straight in there to try to maintain less burnout, less overtime, which of course is a budget hit when you rack up all that overtime. So yeah, anybody that doesn't think I support emergency management should probably call emergency management because everybody there would tell you that I'm a number one. So that's all I can tell you about that. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. And now, Mr. Irig, steps you'd take to support emergency response systems.
Thank you. Yeah, under emergency management, I think is our best way to help emergency response. It's the radio system. I think Dan touched base on that also. It's the generators for the radio system. And it's for our emergency management to be there during the fires and helping on what resources that we need to have is the best. I know financially, we've put about one point, the county has put 1.2 million dollars in emergency management to help with the radio systems. That's the best response I could give to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Andrews. Steps you'd take to support emergency response systems.
Yeah, I've had a lot of very long, great conversations with Jeff King. He's done a phenomenal job updating and, you know, when I, I had no idea the levels and the steps that he brought to updating all of our systems, our radio towers and then bringing us into the future. He's done a really great job. It has not been cheap. So one of the best, I know right now they're, and I don't know if it's been alleviated in the last month, but they've had a real problem with rotation. Basically, burnout and not being fully staffed in their center. Basically, I looked at some proposals where they could have brought in more people, had people working less overtime. Or we would have been better staffed and not spent so much money on training. And it would have actually saved the county, barely cost just a little bit more. But when you looked at it over a five-year term, it would have saved, you know, probably $50,000 a year. And then we wouldn't have had to been training people and had burnout and not had understaffed 911 call center. So it's looking at things from a business perspective and where you want to be in five years and how much you're spending over the next five years, not how much you're spending just this year, just the next year, how you treat your employees and what that does to safeties, you know. How many patrolmen you have. I know that's not directly emergency response, but they've kind of put us in a pickle with the number of officers that we have out there in some of their decisions with the jail. So it's, it's long-term planning and working with each department person and really drilling down into the budget and coming up with that best decision. So.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Kitchens. Steps, steps you'd take to support emergency response systems.
Well, our emergency response systems are very important, especially since we are in this very rural area. And I too have met with Jeff and understanding the vastness of the communication that has to happen in our giant county is sort of mind-blowing. And he keeps the radio towers going, but we also have these pockets where there's no cell And he keeps the radio towers going, but we also have these pockets where there's no cell service and these satellite blips. And so it is important that we keep our communication infrastructure up and running, um, as a whole. Uh, I know that he tries to piece it together with the budget and buy, uh, walkie-talkies or radios from counties that are getting new equipment in, and I applaud him for being resourceful. But I also think everyone else is right with the turnover in the 911 call center. And I know that they are doing things to take care of the emotional well-being of the people that work there because it is a very hard job and they see lots of traumas. So however we can support them and their staff, I am here to do that. And to keep communication open is a main priority, especially as we see these massive wildfires coming every year. Um, we need to be having clear and immediate communication more than ever. So I support the communication.
Thank you. Question number three. What criteria should be used to select land for sustainable energy projects such as pump storage, solar and wind farms to ensure they are both effective and minimally disruptive to local communities, culture and ecosystems? How do you see your role making these decisions? So we start with Mr. Ireg. So it was land use selection criteria and your role.
Oh, land use, uh, especially talking like towards solar or green projects. I, I think we need to look at how close you are to, uh, urban areas. What's the visual view shed? Uh, what land are you looking at putting it on? Uh, is it prime ag or not ag? Uh, that's why I think we, moving forward, we need to update our comp plan. And the comp plan, uh, would be that driving force of the checklist. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, um, Mr. Andrews, land use selection criteria and your role.
Yeah, so, uh, that's a, it's a great question and, and, and I'm told, uh, the way we've done those decisions is they didn't really have a lot of choice. And I've seen these, these outside corporations in the state of Washington come in against the citizens of Clicktack. And, and, and our citizens weren't protected for what they wanted to see happen in the area. Um, and that's gonna happen. You're not gonna win every battle, you know, especially when you have huge corporations in the, in the state of Washington and federal. When some of their, you know, their corporate lawyers come in, but when your county overwhelmingly agrees on certain areas, I believe that it's our job as county commissioner to look out for their best interests. So if we decide to have, uh, wind farms, then get the best deal for them. And a lot of surrounding counties did a much better job providing for their citizens. Um, so that's, that's when on the solar farms, uh, my personal opinion is solar belongs on, on structures, on roofs. And then outside of that, where I definitely think it does not belong is where our food grows, not on our farm or ranch land. So there's a lot of desolate areas outside of urban areas where it should go. And so we have zoning for that reason. And so we're able to do a lot because of that zoning. We can push it out. And I know they don't want to do it there because further away, because it's not close to the power lines. But for our citizens and for us to not have a disaster in 20 years when they pull out and leave us with this massive cleanup, you know, that'll be an environmental nightmare. Um, I think it's, we have to stick up for the citizens because they overwhelmingly wanted that. And, uh, the county commissioners have, have let these projects go on time and time again. So I'm there to, to assist.
Thank you. Um, and now, uh, Ms. Kitchens, land use selection criteria and your role.
Yes, um, you know, I think that we have, we haven't done the best job with our zoning and being very strict on our en- energy overlay zone. And Ron's right, our comprehensive plan is gonna give our community the chance to come together and protect our agricultural areas and our natural resources. Um, you know, the, the conversations that are happening at the state and federal level, I want us to get in there before they come here. So if we don't have a choice and Washington decides that the solar projects or wind projects are coming, we need to be putting them in areas that suit everybody in the county. And these conversations need to be had earlier. Um, I'm not against renewable energy, but I don't think putting them in our backyard and over agricultural lands is the best fit. And Todd's right, they want to be next to the cities because it's close to the power, the substation. Well, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to move your substation somewhere else if you're gonna wanna be doing these things. And I think that through zoning and our rules, we can protect our agricultural lands and communities.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Christopher, land use selection criteria and your role.
Uh, this is where I wish I had an extra minute. Um, first off, citizen involvement in the process, there's the most important one right there. Uh, we've had enough of a spouse, establishment, elected officials thinking they know what's best for us and not listening to us. Um, I try to have community surveys on things like this and, and get told, no, if the people want to talk to us, they can talk to us at 1 o'clock for sense of comment. That is the wrong approach. Elected officials don't know best. Elected officials are supposed to work for the people. It took me three years to get a solar moratorium put in place, to have, uh, Todd, you need to mute. You're stuck on the screen. Um, to put a solar moratorium in place and, and get that over to the planning commission that proposed a prohibition unanimously. The, it isn't just me thinking it's a bad idea putting this stuff super close to town. Uh, it can be put in the tumbleweeds, uh, where nobody's at. You need to have population density criteria. The planning commission needs to come up with rules and regulations, including population density criteria on how far away they are from properties. The problem is I've been pushing that for three years and I can't get it through either because the establishment doesn't want it. And I've been pushing the comp plan for three years and I can't get it started. But this is because the main opposition is Mr. Ireg's development business partner calling and complaining about the squirrel uplifting or the critical areas or th- they've been stopping it for decades. So when we do do the comp plan, folks, whether I'm in office or not, make sure you're involved because they don't want you involved. The current plan by the Board of Commissioners is to have no sub-area plans. I'm sure that will come to a surprise to all of you with sub-area plans, but they plan to do the county plan first and promise you sub-areas and then never give it. I'm opposed.
Thank you. Question number four. What specific measures would you propose to address the housing crisis in the county, ensuring the housing is available for all residents, specifically those in a limited and/or fixed income? So we start with Mr. Andrews. So it's addressing the housing crisis in the county.
Yeah, so I moved here 30 years ago and I currently, my, my property taxes are higher than what they were on my first two houses that I bought here combined. What my mortgages were, my taxes are more than the mortgages of both of those houses, the house that I bought and the house I bought for my mom. So, um, so it's a, it's a little insane. And then we appreciated so much the, the, the value of the homes here. They were quite affordable 30 years ago. Um, government does a really bad job trying to solve homelessness, trying to solve a- affordable housing. I think usually they cause the problems by, by what they institute. So I believe going back to, to the way we used to do things and that, that's volunteering. Uh, the main problem is you need land. There are people out there willing that, that, that have money and that have land that would love to donate it if it's for the right cause, not necessarily to a government or some government program. But we've seen that time and time again. Here in White Salmon, our baseball fields, those were donated. Beth El Shalom, that's a, an elderly, uh, kind of unit. Much of that was donated. A lot of the contractors came in and assisted for free in building that. Some of the materials were donated. And they built this wonderful facility. My mom spent five years in that facility. And, uh, the, the rates were, you know, a third of what rent was other places. So there's a, a number of good ideas between, uh, government and private citizen partnership. But there's, there's a number of lands. I think Clicktack County, I, I believe it's somewhere between 40 and 50, 40 to 60% is, is private land. All the rest is state, county and, and federal lands. And so if we're able to do something with some of those lands or some donated, uh, there's a lot of contractors willing to get out there and, and help with that. But if I could say one more thing, Dalzport, Dalzport should have been going for the last 10 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Kitchens, addressing the housing crisis in the county.
Yes, please let's address the housing crisis. Um, as we all know, this is not unique just to our county. This is happening all over the country. But I think that we are in a u- unique position as Clicktack County being of builders and lots of resources um, and land that we can come up with some good solutions. Um, one, uh, helping the progress of the urban development zones. And even like Todd said, Dalzport, Dalzport is next. It is flat. It is ready to have houses. We need to be helping these projects along. We also need to make it easier for the people who are creating workforce housing or housing for long-term rentals or affordable housing. And maybe that's through the permit process and speeding things along. Um, and I also think we need to get creative about finding new sources of revenue for the housing crisis. I know right now our Airbnbs or the, um, short-term rentals are not registered with the county, which in turn, we can't be charging a tax to the tourists and we could be placing a tourism tax on these Airbnbs. And that money is paid for by the tourists, not the citizens and could be going into a housing budget. Um, and I also think, again, it's about communication and bridge building. I, we have local organizations here. We have the Mid Columbia Housing Authority that helps with rent assistance and first-time homebuyers. And the Columbia Haske- Cascade Housing Corporation that helps link these counties and rural areas with land developers and housing developers. So I'm really excited to get in there and start having these conversations and meeting the right people.
Thank you. Um, and Mr. Christopher.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I guess the answer to your question is what are your solutions? And, and I guess I'll be specific. Um, it's called deregulation. Our county has some of the most regulated planning, uh, in building code in the state. And for a conservative county that shouldn't want to over-regulate, uh, we have. Um, so what have we done about it? Well, we've updated our Title 15 and Title 16 to remove a lot of regulations. It took years, but we finally updated our Title 12 road standards to remove overburdened, some over costly regulations. Because it's simple, folks. Whatever it takes the home builder to build the house, he's gonna put a margin on top of it and sell it for that price. So if you cost it more money to build the house, the margin's still gonna be the same and it's gonna go up. You have to make it cheaper for him to build a house. You have to make it available for everybody to kill two birds with one stone. And here's another one of my ideas that I haven't been able to get the establishment to get traction on, is accessory dwelling units. We do allow accessory dwelling units in the county, but we only allow one per parcel. They have to be 100 feet away from the main parcel. Um, they're a mother-in-law suite. Can't be over 900 square feet, or at least these were the rules four years ago when I put mine in. My in-laws have now moved to Arizona and I have a long-term rental across the driveway, making me income every month. That's how we fix this. We make income cheap for the person living in it. But you're giving the people that have high ta- house payments an ability to have a second income to maintain their house permit. We need to look at that ADU policy, expand that ADU policy and not make it so restrictive. But that needs to be done in the comp plan with the people's vote behind it. Uh, I agree, short-term rentals need to be looked at. They are currently being taxed. The state collects that tax immediately and disperses it to the counties. And we use that money in tourism, which is how it's supposed to be used. Affordable housing comes elsewhere. We get the money elsewhere.
Thank you. Um, and now, Mr. Ireg, addressing the housing crisis in the county.
Thank you. Uh, yes, first, I think zoning's important to make sure we designate the proper zoning where housing should go. The regulations, I definitely agree. We need to try to streamline the regulations. Also, when I served as Commissioner and Mayor, we worked through Maquette, Mid Clem- Economic Development. And went after grants, especially for low-income and migrant workers. That's where we got the migrant workers down in Roosevelt, housing. I, I think we need to keep moving forward and working to make things affordable for low-income to start with, for migrant workers. And then for housing in general, uh, make sure the zoning's proper and the regulations are right. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so question number five. Um, the issue of civility between county commissioners in county commission meetings has been an ongoing point of controversy in recent years, to the point where outbreaks of sharp contention have appeared to affect due process of government. Do you view this as a concern? And if so, how do you want county meetings to be conducted? We'll start with Ms. Kitchens. How do you want county meetings to be conducted?
Um, I do view the lack of civility right now, um, as a concern. I think that the role of county commissioner is one of leadership and that energy trickles through all of the departments and the citizens that they serve. Um, what was the question again?
Um, how do you want county meetings to be conducted?
Oh, how do I want?
Yeah.
I want county meetings to be conducted in, I know people love the Roberts Rules of Order, but I want us to be working together and more of a collaborative environment. Um, I like the recorded meetings. I think it's important that our citizens know what's going on. But I also think we need a lot more time for workshops and sitting down with each other and the departments and working on the challenges before it's just a Tuesday B O C C meeting. And where we've got the commissioners up on a pedestal and we're trying to work out problems. I think that there's a much more creative and collaborative approach that the commissioners could be taking with their employees and with each other. Um, I also think that having more time for citizens to speak their mind, be it at town halls or focus groups that happen throughout the county will stop some of that contention of the citizens not being heard. Because as long as we can keep these avenues open and they can hear their voices being heard, then I think the contention will also settle down too.
Thank you. Okay, and now, Mr. Christopher, how do you want county meetings to be conducted?
Well, every other county in the state runs off Roberts Rules of Order, every board meeting, the, uh, every tractor club, every Democrat Party meeting, Republican Party meeting. Roberts Rules of Order are founded to give everybody an equal voice and keep contention out of them. Uh, we've always, up until this year, we have always ran on Roberts Rules of Order. This year, we don't for some reason. I tried to institute board rules and I still have a copy for tho- anybody that wants to see that. Uh, that would hold commissioners accountable to following Roberts Rules of Order, not calling names, not making snide innuendos. Um, and I believe that would fix it. But those board rules were voted down. It was stopped. And so occasionally, I do have some contentiousness when I get a snide comment. And so occasionally I do have some contentiousness when I get a snide comment my way. From a commissioner, I call a point of order under Roberts Rule of Order and address the chair on what the problem is. And the chair rules with the person making the snide comment. So it just piles on. Uh, now, some of the comments and contentiousness, like Amanda says, comes from the audience for not being heard for the last four to six to ten to twenty years. And I can agree in time, those will get better, but the only way the Board of Commissioner meetings. Go without contention and it isn't a possibility for two people to pick on one, whether that's two Republicans picking on a Democrat. Or two Democrats picking on a Republican or inter-party fighting is to follow the rules, just like we have rules in this debate. If you have rules and then someone breaks the rules, the chair needs to uphold the rules and discipline the member breaking the rules. That's all I'm asking for on the Board of Commissioners, but it it got voted down. And if I'm in office on January first, I'll bring it up. If I'm not in office, I'll hand it off to these fine people and hope that they do it.
Thank you. And now, um, Mr. Ira, do you, how do you want county meetings to be conducted?
I think the first and foremost is respect. Each commissioner has to give each commissioner respect. You have to agree to disagree when a vote's taken, whether you're on the winning side or the losing side. That's how it is. You need to support the position. I agree that we need to look at starting to have workshops. I say, take it downstairs. Everybody sit at the same table. Nobody's above anybody. We need to be talking to our elected officials, so there's no surprises to elected officials. We need to be talking to our department heads. We need to have discussion with all our people, so there's no surprises at board meetings. And board members just need to give each other respect. You don't go condemn. Another elected official after a decision. Also, I agree, we need to be having more town hall meetings, visiting with the public. Getting one-on-one conversation with the public and that may lighten up the call-ins weekly to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and now Mr. Andrews, how do you want county meetings to be conducted? You're on mute.
There you go. Am I on?
Yep, okay.
Uh, I I believe there's been a lot of focus on keeping the citizens. Focused on keeping the citizens civil. Uh, like I know when it was brought up, uh, we were promised to start having town hall meetings. And having town hall meetings brought to the west end of the county and even commissioners meetings to the west end, uh, two years ago. And they've, uh, and I wanted to lump them all in together, but overwhelmingly, a lot of the board's been afraid. You know, because they're like, oh, they get angry and they get, and when you're in a government position and you're taxing people and you're changing their lives. And and you have this, you know, part of it is there's, there's this power and there's, there's people struggling just to make a living, just to get by. And they don't want to have a town hall meeting because the things they've been doing have been upsetting them and they've been making decisions. That are not fiscally responsible and they've been making decisions that are against the zoning. And they're going out, you know, so that they're breaking a lot of rules and they want to keep the citizens like, th- they don't want them to be upset or to get yelled at. And so I definitely, I will be this civil and there's a, there's, there's a politeness and a responsibility to do that. But I'm okay with a little bit of, uh, a little bit of messiness and can let people, if you're doing something that's changing the lives of and their family. They might get a little passionate. They might get a little heated and I'm okay for to to let them vent and to do some of that and to come up. As citizens of Clickittack and make those decisions. Bring, bring those things out into the light. You know, to where you're not doing any vote unless the citizens know thirty days ahead of time what you're going to do and 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 no surprises. I'm constantly, there's a lot of citizens that are surprised at the zoning changes and things, so.
Thank you. We're on question number six. Do you see a need for ongoing economic development in the county? And if so, what does that look like to you? How will you engage, ensure such development occurs in an equitable manner across all county regions? Mr. Christopher, we'll start with you.
Lovely. So I'll piggyback on the green energy uh, discussion earlier. Currently, our economic development plan, which we do have when it was done in two thousand, I think sixteen or seventeen, by the establishment that came before me. Says the central region, my region, Goldendale and Centerville, our economic development plan is solar panels and grapes. Congratulations. I don't know that the people had to say so in that, and I still can't get that update. So all the economic development in the central region, solar panels and grapes. Now, we do get point oh nine dollars or point oh nine percent of sales tax back from the state because we're an important impoverished community. We set up Casey Peta, Clickittack County Public Economic Development Authority Board, which distributes those economic development dollars. We've had those monies for twenty-plus years. We're talking multiple millions of dollars. And until I took office in twenty years, not one dollar had ever been given to the community of Goldendale. One of the three cities in the county, not one dollar has ever went there. I did get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help them with their wastewater treatment plant, but I've been able to get no more. All that money gets focused on the airport, the port district, building multiple hangars, and then down at Benjen and White Salmon. My argument is, if you read the letter of that development board and you read their goals and mission agenda. These are for poor and economically impoverished areas, areas of blight. Uh, blight to me, Goldendale, Wishrum, Clickittack, Roosevelt, those are areas of blight. Why are we not focusing on them? Good question. I've tried, yet I can't get an appointment to the Clickittack County Public Economic Development Authority Board. Or darn near any other board for that matter, because I want to change the status quo, which would stop us giving the money to Commissioner Siders Port District. Uh, that's the establishment and it will continue to be the establishment unless you stop it.
Thank you. Um, and now, Mr. Um, Ira, your vision for equitable economic development.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, whether we agree or not, a lot of the green projects are part of economic development, like the pump storage. Uh, we're also talking about a data center coming in at the old aluminum plant. We're uh, talking a lot of different projects going on, like in Dalzport. When Casey Peta was put in place, uh, I served Joan Fry and Swary Baki back in ninety, in the mid nineties. And we revamped the Economic Development Authority, which is still being used today. Also, at that time, we funded it with three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help with economic development in Clickittack County, which is no longer funded. But Dan is correct, there is the old nine dollars that Casey Peta can hand out. I think we need to go above and beyond and move forward with economic development. There's a lot of businesses out there in Dalzport's prime. For economic development to take off. It has an airport, you know, it's close to the river system. We need to help promote that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and now, uh, Mr. Andrews, your vision for equi- equitable economic development.
Yeah, the uh, both Ron and Dan made, made good points. The uh, the economic development dollars have not been spread throughout the county. They have gone to Benjen's Port and to Dalzport, mainly, mainly to Benjen. But you, you, you see that with a lot of our, a lot of our development, um, a lot of our road dollars unfortunately have come to the west end. And the west end has been growing more, but the, but there needs to be some kind of breakdown where we'd long-term. You know, occasionally you would have a large portion going to one specific area, like what was done at the Benjen Port. That brought a lot of jobs in and that was great. Um, and so maybe for a year or two, a lot, and a larger percentage would go to that. But having it broke down per town, per area, and really trying to distribute it equally. And trying to look at what businesses need to go in, what empty warehouses, what buildings. When, when you look at, after the aluminum plant, when you look at the Dalz, it, it's never recovered. And there's been, I know a number of manufacturing plants that have, have looked at moving into the area. And I just, and I've heard some of the conversations, like I, I think some of those could have been brought in. Uh, if the county commissioners were kind of focused on that and with their, their time and attention. So there, there's a, there's a lot of things, but it, it needs to be spread out and there just basically needs to be a percentage breakdown where they're, they're focused on. Not just pouring it in one center and one location, so that businesses can prop up and and we can just play a role in that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and Ms. Uh, Kitchens, your vision for equitable economic development?
Um, yes, I agree with uh, the other gentleman here that we could be distributing those point oh nine dollars across the county. But I also want to look outside of these point oh nine dollars. And I, when I think about economic development, I really think we should start by leveraging the resources and skills that we already possess as a county. Our county has grown tremendously, uh, thanks to tourism, but if we want a sustainable and livable county, we need to not just be relying on tourism alone. I will work to bring manufacturing and skilled trades back to Clickittack County. I've been in conversations with the unions. I know there are apprenticeship opportunities so that the next generation can have access to our local and high-paying jobs. I also know that there's great work being done in sustainable for- forestry and fire mitigation. And this also has the potential to grow in scope, but it brings us back to the housing crisis. And it's hard for our small business owners and local companies to hire employees when they don't have a place to live. So I think there's a lot we can do around economic development, but I think it's this, um. It's something that we have to approach from multiple angles when we're addressing it. And in my dreams at night, I think about starting our own housing manufacturing and having the unions in, helping teach the trades and apprenticeships. And we can be contributing houses to the housing crisis in the region, but we can also be creating jobs and finding solutions that way. So I can't wait to dream big on economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, the last three questions are from the general public. Um, so question number seven is, what will you do to address the lack of behavioral health services? Including access to treatment for substance use disorders in our county? And we'll start with Mr. Ira, addressing lack of behavioral health services.
Thank you. I, I believe the county's been moving forward in this direction by when they took it in-house and uh, visiting with. Aaron Quinn and a lot of the direction and finances they've moved forward on. It, it just takes time to rebuild something new. I know years ago when I served in as county commissioner, we had it internally in-house and turned it back to the state. That seemed to work. Now, the county really needed to take over a lot of that. So it's just making sure the funding's there and it's moving in the right direction.
Alright, thank you. Um, and Mr. Andrews, addressing lack of behavioral health services.
Yeah, this, this, this one hits near and dear because uh, I was raised by a single mother that had mental health issues and uh, problems with manic depression. Uh, and so I, I just go, go from, from, from that experience where as a, as a young child, you know, you, you felt more like the adult than the person supposed to be raising you. Um, and so there's a lot of ups and downs through that. Um, and there, there's not facilities like there used to be. Um, they're extremely expensive and even when they're well-funded, they're not great places necessarily. So the, the solution is not just to throw, I mean, we've seen that from, from homelessness to. All, all, all the, all these crises that we just throw endless money at and then you look at it and you're like, oh, the problem's actually worse now than it was before. So it, 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 it takes some, some caring. I, I think it's always a combination of getting the citizens involved and and private. Uh, great, great facilities, churches, wh- whether they be churches or or whatever, where, where you team up and the community makes those decisions. Rather than a, a government that is not connected and that uh, there, there's no soul to a government. And so my mom was in some of those facilities for brief periods of time and they, they were not great. Um, so I definitely think uh, private citizens and 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 in working partnerships help in that. But it's a, it's, it's basically getting an advisory board together, getting some grant money, making those decisions. But not just looking that we can tax our citizens and create this thing, this monstrous facility that maybe isn't in their best interest. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Kitchens, um, addressing lack of behavioral health services.
Um, yes, there has been a real lack in our county for behavioral health services. But like Ron said, Aaron Quinn of the Health Department aggressively went after some funding and received grant funds. To fully support the Behavioral Health Department and addiction resources. It does take a lot to get these. To get a behavioral health um, department up and running. And um, I know they've been posting for jobs. They have uh, twenty-four-seven crisis lines, but it's not enough. It's hard to fill these positions because people don't have a place to live to come here to work. But things that we can do as county commissioners is we can support that department. We can make sure that we're doing everything we can to help communicate to the, to the community what can be done. We need to make sure that there's safe transport between hospitals and jails and police officers. I would love to have. Support on hand that, you know, there's a lot of cases that don't necessarily require law enforcement. And I would like to see our Behavioral Health Department have support in those zones. So that if there is a call, they can sit with these people or sit at the hospital until they see help so that our officers are out patrolling. Um, I think that there's a lot of growth, but I also think, that can happen, but I also think we're moving in the right direction. And um, I think there's a lot we can do with the regional nonprofits that are helping with addiction support as well. And be, we need to look at it as a regional thing going on and taking care of each other that way as well.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Christopher, addressing lack of behavioral health services.
Yeah, I know some of the candidates may not want to throw me a bone and say good job on this one, but you're welcome. Um, contentiousness is sometimes is a good thing. Uh, we've been battling mental health crisis in this county for decades. Uh, I testified before the previous board on multiple occasions about the poor job comprehensive mental health was doing. The amount of money they were getting and the amount of money they were spending out of our county that was supposed to be spent in our county. And they had the good feel-good meetings like Ron's discussing where you all sit around a table and nothing ever got done for years. Um, well, that was top of my list. Uh, let's call comprehensive in and let, let's have a come to Jesus moment. Uh, let's tell them, hey, this is not gonna take it anymore. When you get state money, you spend it in our county. What's wrong? And and yeah, I kind of called them out a little bit. You can go back and watch that video. Um, and they quit. Great news for us because now we can do it. Uh, so we stepped up our own behavioral health department, went out and got all state money, no local money. We have far more employees. Comprehensive said they couldn't find employees. We're not having a problem finding most of the employees they couldn't find. We're trying to expand that now and do outpatient care. And in that regard, we are having trouble finding dedicated employees and psychiatrists and whatnot, because they don't want to move and live in this area. So we are gonna have to get. Ingenuity to try to figure out how to convince them to move to this area while still using that state money to get them here and not use local tax money. So again, we've come a long way. Aaron and the Health Department and the Behavioral Health Department have done fabulous things. We have a long way to go and it's gonna take a push and it's gonna take a little bit of compa- uh, contentiousness to get the state to continue funding. To get the state to continue funding a project that's something that should be funded by the state and their own institutions themselves and they're not doing it. I will continue to push for it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Question number eight. How do you plan to ensure accountability and fairness within the newly separated Corrections Department? While maintaining a collaborative relationship with the sheriff's office? So we'll start with Mr. Andrews and I'll repeat the question again. So how do you plan to ensure accountability and fairness within the newly separated Corrections Department? While maintaining a collaborative relationship with the sheriff's office?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's going to be because we've, because we've expanded and, and added so much expense. While basically doing the same thing, it's going to be a little more complicated. Uh, because now you have more people doing the exact same thing in different departments. Um, but it's, 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 it's like, it's like everything else there in, in, in the government. Uh, if right now I'm, I'm on the outside and, and looking at that, but I know they're. They're hiring for those positions and so if they bring in qualified people and all those people will have to. Have, you know, have had all the training unless we're having a hard time finding someone with that training. I know sometimes they'll decide like. Okay, we're going to hire you and, and take you through the training that we need you to have. But, uh, law enforcement and jails, they, they do that all the time. They're professionals. Uh, they want to do the best job. They want to make sure, the jailers want to make sure their employees are safe and. And the people in the jail are also safe and then follow those procedures and protocols. And, you know, whether it be city police or sheriff's department. Uh, they work really well inter-departmentally as far as, um, you know, they have to work with state troopers and. And, uh, they have to work with, uh, people on the reservation. So. Uh, I, I don't think that will be complicated. I think there's, they're professionals and I know a lot of the jail staff is going to stay on. Uh, I don't know that for sure, but it, it seems like a lot of them will stay on. So.
Thank you. Um, and now, uh, Ms. Kitchens. So how do you plan to ensure accountability? And fairness within the newly separated Corrections Department while maintaining a collaborative relationship with the sheriff's office?
Um, as far as accountability goes, I do believe that it is a commissioner's responsibility to. Tour the jails and keep an eye on the jails, um, especially now that the Corrections Department is going to be under the commissioners. But even before that, um, I would have been touring the jails and going forward. I want to trust that our commissioners and HR have hired a great new, uh. Corrections director. What, what is their title? Um. Um, oh, I'm losing it. I'm a little nervous. Um, so. I think that it will only be as contentious as we allow it to be. And if we have open communication and positive workflow and people are doing what they should be doing. Then I don't see any problem in the future with the sheriff working with the Corrections Departmenty or the Corrections Department with any other police force.
Thank you. Um, and Mr. Christopher, you are up. So how do you plan to ensure accountability? And fairness within the newly separated Corrections Department while maintaining a collaborative relationship with the sheriff's office?
Um, first things first would be policy. We're, we, we set policies so we can set policy, which I've tried to do and can't get it done. Uh, but we can set policy that sets, uh, makes it a mandatory that we have a yearly evaluations. We bring it, bring in outside consultant to do a walk to and do a yearly evaluation or two-year evaluation. Or whatever, but you have to actually set the policy. Um, we haven't done that. Um, I think the new director in the separation from the sheriff will give the public some. Um, feel good, feel better, uh, vibes and hopefully through some transparency there. If, if whatever boards in place next year keeps some transparency going there. Uh, there will be more, uh, trust from the public in the, in the sheriff's department or of the jail. Now collaborative is the problem. Um, the, the Sheriff's Department employees do not trust the Board of Commissioners. Um, they feel abused and neglected. They feel mistreated. Um, they feel just damaged verbally over what's taken place in the last six months. And it does come down to trust, but when trust is gone, you have to rebuild that relationship. I don't know that it can be rebuilt with the current Board of Commissioners, but it's going to have to try. And especially with the employees of the jail where we're still receiving emails. They don't know if they have a job tomorrow. Nobody will tell them what's going on. Their mental health. We're going to have to hire more mental health people just to deal with our own employees that we've caused the mental health problems. And again, this comes down to better planning, better organization, better decision-making. This all could have been handled without the drama and the politics. And everybody would have been better. We just chose not to do. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and now, uh, Mr. Eric, you are, um, next. So do you want me to repeat the question?
Please, if you would.
How do you plan to ensure accountability and fairness within the newly separated Corrections Department? While maintaining a collaborative relationship with the sheriff's office?
Well, first and foremost, as it was mentioned earlier by other candidates, that there is a new director being hired. For the Department of Corrections. It's important for the commissioners to keep him accountable. I very much agree that policies and procedures need be written. And the board will need to spend a lot more time communicating with the new director. That's very important. It's communications as well as working, being collaborative with the sheriff. It's really, we need to sit down and communicate and I think there's been a gap in the communications. But besides the sheriff, I think we need to sit down with all the user groups. Like I said earlier before, a couple of weeks ago, I'm more than happy once elected to sit down and meet with all the user groups, the sheriff. And open communications amongst all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Question number nine. How do you plan to engage individuals and the community in your decision-making processes? To ensure their voices are heard and considered? And we'll start with Ms. Kitchens.
Oh, I love chatting with people and I want to, um. I've always been friendly and know a lot of people. That's just my nature. And one of my most favorite things about running for office has been all of the incredible people that I get to meet. And, um. I do think, uh, we were talking about, uh, small community groups. I think these types of meetings are going to be very important for the commissioners to show up to Trout Lake and Snowden. And Husam and Goldendale and Bickleton and ma- help. Help make it easier for people to share their thoughts. Zoom isn't always easy. People can't always get to Goldendale. I will, I will be available to listen to the needs of any of the citizens. I also would really like to not just have these town halls as we know them, but workshops where we can come together as a community. And share our ideas. I feel like in a lot of my meetings, I leave so inspired and it's not just somebody that's already working for the county. Or running an organization. We have really intelligent, hardworking people that live here and have great ideas. And I look forward to the time that we can all be sharing these ideas and brainstorming together. Because for democracy to truly work, we do have to listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Mr. Christopher. Um, so it's how do you plan to engage individuals and the community in your decision-making processes? Um, to ensure their voices are heard and considered?
Uh, well, the answer to that is to not change anything that I'm currently doing. Uh, right now, every vote I make is a vote of the people. It's not a vote of what I want or what my friend wants or what my business partner wants. It's what the people want. How do I get to that analogy? I do weird things. I tell people they can call me and I actually answer them back. I answer every email. Uh, I tell people to let me know and I'll drive to your house and have a conversation on your porch and I've done that. I stand outside grocery stores as an anonymous person that nobody knows who this is and I ask them questions. They don't even know who I am, but they're answering the questions and I'm getting a good insight on how they feel on different decisions. So that I can take a good random sampling, uh, before I make a decision. I want to have community polling and I've researched this and I've presented it to the board where. If the organization, it would cost about ten thousand dollars a year. You send out as many polls as you want. They send them out to all of the, uh, people in the county. And then they cross-match the results with the voter database to make sure you're not getting swayed results from Portland or Seattle. So you know you're only hearing from your people. And then you make the decisions based on what the people want. And so if there's a, if there's a decision in Trout Lake, it ain't weird to see me standing outside the Trout Lake General Store. Eating one of them chocolate nutty things that they sell inside of there that are so delicious for a chubby guy like me, just. Talking to the random people coming in and out about the various issues. And, and that helps me get the idea to go to the board and vote the way the people want on solar. Against under canvas, against strip mining, the, the, uh, White Salmon River for new development. Uh, of, of, against giant development in Trout Lake with one fire exit and one way in and one way out. If the people are against it, I'm against. I don't have a dog in the fight. I don't know the developer. I don't know any of them, which is perfect. I just vote for the people every time.
Thank you. Um, uh, Mr. Eric. Um, so how do you plan to engage individuals and the community and your decision-making processes to ensure their voices are heard and considered?
Thank you. Uh, like in the past, what I always try to do is get out and go to community meetings. I, I loved when there used to be community councils in every community and that's kind of slowed down, but. Uh, I've done that here in the last some months, uh, got out to the Wishram Community Council, which I didn't know. In each community, in the Trout Lake Community Council, I've gone to the Fire Hall meetings. If they don't have a community like Appleton or other areas, you've got to get out into those communities, be seen. And then you need to listen. Every community has a little something going on. Uh, I like to have my phone where people could call me. I say, leave me a message. I may not be able to get back to you right away. Send me emails. I just like to be out and be seen so people feel one-on-one, they could talk to you. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, um, Mr. Andrews. Oh, I'm sorry. You want me to repeat the question? I should.
No, no, this is, this has been.
Good, okay.
This is what I've been doing for five years is because, uh, uh, in between five and four years. Um, we, we started a group called the Click tat Liberty Business Alliance. When we started noticing, uh, it was during COVID when we were like. Uh, we noticed Walmart was allowed to be open, but small businesses weren't. And so it didn't match up with any science, you know, so there was a, there was a lot of games like that, that, that corporations were able to keep their businesses open. And, and small businesses struggled and failed and it, it wasn't following any safety procedure or anything like that. It's not like. You go through the doors at some large corporation and, and th- those are the places. I remember in the beginning, I, I was like actively afraid. I don't consider myself a, a germaphobe or anything like that, but when I went into the most crowded Walmart I'd ever seen in my life and Costco. And I'm like, why are these the only two businesses that are allowed to be open and they're herding us in here? This can't be safe. So we started that group to start meeting with, uh, with different business leaders and. And people in the community and that just kind of stemmed from there to be this voice. Cause we noticed there were a lot of other groups meeting, whether on Zoom or something like that. Uh, you know, the Snowden Community Council. Uh, there, there's, there's numerous things going on and so that's how we kind of got involved in. Um, I don't know if you want to call it protesting, but understanding what under canvas was doing, understanding the solar project through Cease Solar. Um, and a lot of these people, I didn't necessarily agree one hundred percent with. What they wanted to do or how they felt the government or these corporations were, were harming them. But I did believe in the citizens sticking up together and saying like, I'll help you defend your land and your property and I'll help you make those decisions. So town hall meetings, but then just bringing the light of the government to, up to everybody.
All right. Thank you. So that concludes our questions for the evening. Now each candidate will have two minutes to close. Please use this time to clarify your top priorities as county commissioner. You may also choose to revisit any topics that were covered in tonight's forum that would be of most importance for voters. So the first person to go will be Mr. Christopher.
Yay. Um, I don't, I didn't prepare a closing statement. I just, I'm encouraged that hopefully whoever gets elected here and especially, obviously we're going to have one in District One. I, I believe they can follow the will of the people over the special interests, but they're going to have to have courage. They're going to have to stand up to the establishment that tries to tell them what to do. And I think they got it. I hope they got it. In my race, I think it's a little more clear cut. Before Commissioner Soder left office, which everybody knows Commissioner Soder for sixteen years. He turned to me and we didn't always get along on much and he turned to me and he said, uh, Dan, you know, we didn't always agree. But I want you to know that I, I respect the fact that you always voted for the people. And, and that actually touched me. I mean, it still kind of touches me now. But it also made me think and it, it made me wonder and I asked him, I'm like, well, if I always voted for the people, how come we didn't get a lot, get a. Uh, agree on our votes more. And he took a minute and he thought, and he answered, politics. And it kind of set me back. And then he explained to me that if you don't do what, and he named the name of Ron Irig's Development Partner. If you don't do what these people want, the campaign donors, they will find somebody to run against you. It isn't a matter of serving the people. It's a matter of serving the special people and I will never do that. Uh, I will quit before I ever do that. I will always serve the people and in doing so, I will always be under the attack of the establishment. Who has lost their money because I'm not giving it to them. Um, thank you and I hope, I hope you candidates fight back a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now Mr. Eric, you are next. Um, so just. I don't know if you need me to repeat the question. You're just doing your closing statements and you can go back and revisit if you want to any topic. So.
No, thank you. Uh, probably just in closing, I would like to say. Make it clear, I do have the experience. I have the institutional knowledge. I have the demonstrated leadership. I believe I'm the right person to build bridges and mend fences. We need to work with other public entities to move mountains. We can't do that on our own. And we seem like the county's been on their own. I think it's very important that I will not. Go on conspiracy theory or rumors. I will go on fact. Thank you for your time this evening and thank you for having me.
Thank you. All right. And Mr. Andrews?
Yes, thank you, Chelsea. Um, I guess, uh, the best way to wrap up is just to state some of the, some of the main pledges that I've talked to people. Um, I have my own personal opinions on, on a lot of issues. When people ask me questions. I'm very direct and, and passionate about my wanting to protect personal property rights, uh, people's personal rights. Um. And, and, and we have rules and, and laws in place that are, that are supposed to do that. And I've seen some of that breaking down. So the, the, the main things that I pledged to address was citizens' interest above corporate demands. I'm one of the only ones running that, that's not taking outside, any outside, uh, PAC money, any outside corporate money. All my money is coming from inside the county, from, from small local donations. Uh, I was approached by a number of, of PACs and things like that. And they ask you these questions, will you do this? Will you do this? And I'm like, I'm not going to decide what I'm going to do to my citizens and, and. And so I, I turn. And, and, and so I, I turned down uh, three of those. But uh, citizens' interest above corporate demands, creative solutions for, to fiscal challenges. Also balanced property rights. I think that's extremely important. Uh, we have to get those back, back in balance. Uh, support law enforcement and community safety that includes the mental health. Uh, and bringing back citizens' advisory boards and town hall meetings. But doing that on steroids where in this day of connectivity, it's sad that we don't have, that, that we don't have hundreds of people in, in the room, in the voice, whether digitally, through Facebook, through texting, through emails and getting people's voices, uh, and even assisting us in making wise decisions. So those are my main things. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Kitchens.
Um, I, I would like, I would like to thank um, you and the League of Women Voters for putting tonight together. I think it's really great that all the people get to meet the candidates in one spot. Um, you know, I'm just, I'm excited to bring the people together genuinely. I am excited to get to work. And I feel like the last, since February, I've just been building this beautiful rolodex of local organizations and nonprofits and citizens. And um, I can't wait to get in there and connect these dots and build these bridges so that we can see these projects and ideas move forward. And no, they are not outside corporate interests. They are all within Clicktac County and the people who work here and live here. I'm really committed to collaborative work environment and a healthy work environment. Um, and I'm just ready to get to work and help us all come together and be heard and find solutions instead of looking over our shoulders in the past and pointing fingers. We need to be moving forward and thinking about what we want our county to look and feel like in the next fifty to one hundred years. I can't wait to help dive in and support this comprehensive plan. And um, we, I do believe in sub-area plans for the comprehensive plan a hundred percent. The comprehensive plan is going to be the best it can be if the community actually comes together and is involved in this process. And let's not forget, let's get a grant writer for our county because we need to find some funds. Um, thank you so much for your time and I look forward to be of, to be of service to you all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. That was great. Everybody stayed really close to their time. I appreciate it. So we are, this concludes our Clicktac County Commissioners Forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, the Columbia Gorge News and the Goldendale Sentinel, we thank all the candidates, all of you for your participation tonight. Tonight's recorded coverage will be available on the League of Women Voters YouTube channel as well as the Columbia Gorge News and Goldendale Sentinel's YouTube channels. It can also be found on the League of Women Voters Facebook pages. For more information on the upcoming election or help with voter registration, please vote for oneone.org. And remember to mark your ballot early and return it on time to be counted on November fifth. Thank you again, everybody. Appreciate it.
Much, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Have a good night.